Welcome, everyone. We are here for the Tuesday, July 25th, meeting of the Fitchburg Planning Board. Our board chair is out this week, so I will be filling in for her in the meantime. I just have a few introductory comments to read ahead of time. All meetings of the Fitchburg Planning Board are open to the public. This does not mean the public participates in all aspects of the meeting. It simply means the meeting itself, including all discussions and votes, is open for public view. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing, please raise your hand, and the board will acknowledge you at the appropriate time during the meeting. The board will also monitor any participants that are attending virtually for questions at the appropriate time. Virtual attendees are asked to use the "raise hand" function to be acknowledged. Please state your name and address. Approach the center table and either sit or stand. This allows you to be seen and heard clearly by everyone in attendance. The Planning Board requests that comments be limited to no more than five minutes in the interest of time. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast, and I ask that anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by stating their name and address. Seeing none, we will continue. All right. Chantel, do we have any A&R plans tonight?
No A&R's.
Okay. So we're moving on to minor site plan, which we have been asked to continue. We had a minor site plan review for Steve Senni, 69 Cully Street. That's correct, right, Chantel?
That is correct. In regards to that application, Steve Senni contacted the office and would like to come back before the Planning Board in September. Unfortunately, the extension we gave him goes to September 25th, so I'm recommending an additional 30 days from the Planning Board this evening.
Okay, to our October meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm glad you mentioned that, because Paula and I talked earlier today, and one of the things she wanted to double-check was the dates on the extensions for both Ronald and Cully. So now we'll make a motion to extend Cully Street to our October meeting, which is October 24th. If someone wants to put that in the form of a motion.
Motion to extend the minor site plan extension for Steve Senni to October 24th.
Motion made?
Second.
And seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. All right. And actually, I didn't check. I apologize. Okay. So we have Alex and Paula aren't here. Two, four, we still have five, so just have to deal with that when we get to the special Do you know, Chantel, do we need, I know it's not on the agenda, but do we need to, for the sake of clarity, just make a motion for Ronald Street for time? Especially if our August meeting is going to be the last Tuesday, which we're going to talk about later on tonight?
Let me take a look.
I mean, if it's easier for you, we can just make it the last, we can make it our September meeting. The only problem is you'd have to get them designed again, so.
So you would, if we end up moving the August meeting, because it does say August 22nd.
Okay. So just for the sake of convenience, I suggest we move, we reissue a new one for Ronald Street to our September meeting. They can come in August, our August meeting, obviously, if they're ready, but that way we're just safe and it's no problem.
Right. I agree.
Someone wants to put in a form of a motion?
Still moved.
Motion made?
Second.
And seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. All right. And we are moving on to public hearings, of which we have three tonight. The first public hearing, and Chantel, correct me if I'm wrong, solar energy development 140 Anhow Farm Road, installation of three solar canopies over a portion of parking areas, to be continued to our August meeting?
Originally, that is what they were aiming for, but the engineer did come back with some revised plans, although not everything in its entirety. What's missing is the landscape plan there, waiting for their third-party, you know, group to finish that. So I did upload a couple of things they submitted. I do believe it was Monday.
Does no one hear, oh, actually, is Mr. Picardo, is that who?
It's Jose.
Okay. So Jose, certainly welcome to talk. I'm going to preface any conversation we have by saying, our board chair is fully under the expectation that we're continuing this meeting tonight and not taking testimony. So if there's something pertinent you'd like to say, certainly welcome to say it, but I don't know how far we're going into this.
Okay. That's perfectly understandable. It is correct. We do not have the landscape plan completed yet, so we were just here in case you had any additional questions or anything, just to answer those.
Excellent. I very much appreciate that. As of right now, unless Jeff, unless the city engineer has anything that he wanted to mention, or if any of the board members do for that matter, I'd rather just continue it till our next meeting, because as I said, the board chair and I were both under the impression that we were continuing anyway.
That is correct.
Jeff, I don't know if you have anything to add. I'm not putting you on the spot at all. You certainly don't have to. I just wanted to give you the opportunity.
Sorry, board. Actually, if we could continue or proceed with continuing, that'd be great, because engineering actually did not have a chance to review the applicant's middle, only because, well, A, because of the continuation, and B, because we were recently working or reminiscing the recent storm that happened a couple of weekends ago.
I know you had your hands full. No problem at all, Jeff. Like I said, didn't want to put you on the spot.
No, it felt good. Thank you, guys.
Great, thanks, Jeff. All right.
Motion to continue the Anhow Farm Road project till the next meeting?
Motion made?
Second.
And seconded, to continue to our next meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Is that August, then?
That would be August, which is, we're going to talk about it, but I think, I know Paula has the hope, and I'm with her, that it's going to be the last Tuesday in August, which will be the fifth Tuesday, not the fourth. The only thing we have to do is we just have to double-check the schedule for the meeting room.
Okay.
Because that's not our normal night, but I can't imagine something's on the fifth Tuesday, because that only happens two or three times a year, so.
Yeah, how many times?
Anyway. Next up is a special permit and site plan modification. The permit number was 2021-10, City Storage, Zero Lancaster Road. It's a modification of a site plan consisting of changes to the retaining wall and host placement. All right. Let me just get your plan up here. And you'll have to excuse me for one second, because I'm still, we're still catching up from.
No, no problem. We're on your schedule.
Yeah, no worries. All right. Okay. Wonderful. You can just state your name, and you're free to give us a summary.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Greg Roy with Dulles &amp; Roy Civil Design Group, and I'm representing City Storage this evening. As you indicated, we're here this evening for an amended site plan, which was approved by your board through the special permit process back about a year and a half ago, I believe. And just to refresh everybody's memory, I'll try to be as brief as I can, but we ultimately permitted three residential, single-family residential homes on the property, which is located in a business zone, which is why the special permit was required. Those houses, single-family houses, were permitted on single-family, individual lots. After we received the special permit, we submitted an A&R plan to your board, which was endorsed and has been recorded. So tonight, we're here to try to satisfy the conditions of the approval, which required submission of architectural plans and an update to the site plan. There is an interested buyer on the property, and so we have provided some updated architectural plans. The net result of the proposed plans at the site is to reduce the building footprints, which takes a significant strain off the back of the site in particular. This property had, when it was originally proposed, we were proposing a rather tall and lengthy retaining wall in the back to retain the grade between the lots, the back of the lots, and the City Storage Building. Thank you. And so this plan that you see here in front of you, was able to, we were able to significantly reduce the size of the wall, because the building footprints have been significantly reduced. So we, all of those house boxes have been almost by a factor of two, almost. So as a result, we kept the street offset the same that was approved, which was approved to be the same as the abutting property, so we're not proposing any difference in the location relative to the street, but we're able to increase the backyards on the property and, of course, shrink the retaining wall down to only a section that's immediately adjacent to the lot 3A driveway, which is the lot furthest to the right on your plan there. The architectural plans have been provided. We're proposing to use a drive-under house box on the right-most lot, which is Lot 3A. The other two lots would have a mirrored footprint. Those are more of a colonial-style house with a front-loaded garage, as you see on the plan there. Other than that, we didn't, haven't really changed much. We really feel like the plan changes that we made are a pretty significant improvement at the site, and I think I'll stop it.
House sizes, you said they were reduced significantly. What's the approximate house size?
Great question. So we have the dimensions there. Lots one and two, we have a nominal dimension width of 54 feet, including the garage, by, I think it's 24.
Okay, so it's 34, 24, probably for the house? Something like that?
Yes, exactly. Yes.
1,600 square-foot house-ish, something like that?
Right. Two stories, but the footprint is rather modest. And then Lot 3 is even smaller. That's a tight lot there, when you factor in the slope, and it has a drive-under garage on that one, too, so.
So one of the conditions from the prior permit that the top of the retaining wall was to have a vinyl fence, is that, I don't see that on the plan?
We still have the fence. You can see the X's. They're done, I kept the fence just because the slope itself, even without the retaining walls, fairly steep, so we're keeping the fence there, and then we'll have a vinyl fence across the top of the retaining walls.
So the fence, the fence will carry over to that X right behind the garage?
Uh...
What's the X right behind the garage for?
Which lot?
Lot 3. The furthest right, whatever.
Furthest right. Yeah, there's a line with X's in it.
Yeah, you see where it says, when I click on it, it says AutoCAD, that one right there?
Oh, yeah. That's a spot grade, so that's the sort of detailed grading.
The reason why I say that is, now that the wall's shorter, are there any concerns that those topo, that that topography is steep enough where it's a safety hazard, where that fence should go all the way behind those houses?
Well, we're actually bringing it all the way across.
Oh, that's this back dot, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the back dot down here. I see.
We're going to bring it all the way back across Lot 2.
Perfect. Good, good.
That's the same location as it was when the retaining wall was there.
Good.
I just didn't think it was prudent to not put that in.
Yeah, no, no, no. I agree. That's what I was going to say. I'm glad that it's there. Has the wall been engineered yet?
It has not. We anticipate providing that along with a building permit application, if that's acceptable to your commission.
And I wanted to talk about, one of the other permit conditions was about the architectural design, and I'll read to you a few things from the hearing that we had. One of them was a comment from Board Member Capitaglia about, "House design should not be cookie-cutter, but significantly different style siding and roofline." Board Member O'Kane at the time said, "Make them look nice." There was a condition that says, "The dwellings shall have different architectural styles, materials, and rooflines." That's not what you see there. Those are pretty ugly.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that feedback.
I mean, I'd be interested to take other board feedback, if you find that adequate. I mean, there's not even, there's not even change in, there's not even change in the front facade, and there's probably only a two-foot step back from the garage. I mean, it's about as basic as basic comes. I thought it was very clear, not only was it in the permit, but I know it was brought up by a few people during the hearing, that one of the more interested things we needed was that the architectural plans, the buildings, look nice. And these just are about as, again, about as basic a design as you can get.
Understood. Your points noted. I think part of the problem there is beauty's in the eye of the beholder, but I do appreciate your comment.
I mean, there's nothing "not cookie-cutter" about that house. And the permit specifically said, "Not cookie-cutter."
Understood.
So, I mean, no one can argue that those aren't the most basic, standard, builder-grade construction. I don't think it can be argued that they look nice.
Understood.
Does any board member disagree with me?
No, they look like every other.
Yeah. The elevations need to change. Matter of fact, even, I think, whether it was you or the applicant, someone had mentioned during the public hearing that before you spent any resources, you were looking for approvals, because you needed to pay to get the architectural plans done. You can get that off the internet. I mean, that's...
Okay. Yeah, understood.
So we're going to need, Paula asked me to verify, and I don't know if it was on there, you can correct me if I'm wrong, are we still waiting on a landscape plan?
We do not have, the landscape plan is not, is not part of your package.
So those conditions still aren't satisfied, the landscape plan and the elevation. So before any permits are pulled or any construction takes place, the board has to approve those , too. As far as the retaining wall, the board chair and I had a long conversation about this earlier today, and we're both of the same mindset, that as long as engineering is fine with them, as long as DPW is fine with them, you know, it's inconsequential, at least to the chair and I. So I'll defer to Jeff, if he wants to say anything about that, and then the board can chime in if they have questions or comments.
Engineering actually did not have a chance to review these plans, so at this point, if we could get a chance to look at them, that would be, that'd be best.
Yeah, so just so you know, Jeff, the plans have only changed insofar as how wide the retaining wall is, not the actual retaining wall itself, so I think you might not necessarily need to step in until you get the engineered, you know, the engineered retaining wall itself, and at that point, the approval is going to be conditioned on you approving that retaining wall, anyway.
Okay.
So unless, I mean, unless there's any notable issues about the locational wall, like I said, I think we can take this at face value, unless you, unless you think otherwise, unless you think you need to see something or look at something before we make a decision.
No, I'll go with your judgment on that.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff, sorry.
Yeah.
Any board members have questions or comments on any of this?
All set.
A Lynn or, I think it's just a Lynn virtually, right?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. Just so the applicant is aware, oh, Alex is there. Good. Alex, do you have any questions or comments?
No, not at the moment.
For the purpose of voting, were you here for the whole hearing? This, just this hearing?
Nope. I just got in.
Okay. All right. So if you weren't here at the opening of this hearing, then you can just hold off on voting on this one, most likely, and we'll vote with just the board and a Lynn for now, and then the next one, you'll be good to go.
Sounds good. Thank you.
So my suggestions are, just that if we're okay with the new plan that's in front of us, which I think the change is relatively minor, we can approve the new plan, carrying over all the existing conditions as they pertain to this plan in our special permit decision, 2021-10, and probably just add to it that, although it might already be in there, adding to it that the design, the final design of, engineering design of the retaining wall, to be, to the satisfaction of DPW and the engineering department, as well as, like I said, the only other things we would have outstanding. There's other permit conditions, but we don't need to reiterate it, because it's still on there, but we still need to approve architectural designs of the houses and landscaping. And if the board is okay with that, I'm open to a motion.
Motion to approve minor site plan modifications for the Zero Lancaster Road project, carrying over all the previous site plan conditions.
Excellent. And then the only other one would be to add, if it's not already in there, DPW and engineering review of the final design stamp set of the retaining wall.
Agreed.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Could I, so you intend to close and just carry those perpetual conditions, and we'd be submitting those to you, just to satisfy those conditions outside of the public hearing process? I mean, as part of your meeting, but not as part of the public hearing process?
Correct. So what we'll most likely do is another, of course, that's up to the chair. I do want to kind of give a little caveat there, that she might decide to have it as a public hearing, she might decide to do it on other business.
Because if you want to do that, I'd almost suggest maybe just keeping the hearing open, and then we just provide you the information?
If you, if you think you'll have...
If you can't, if you or your staff can't sign off on a building permit until we get it?
Well, you couldn't, anyway. You still haven't satisfied the numerous conditions.
And you're going to, and your board's going to want to see those, so, I mean, I would suggest that we just keep it open.
I would prefer to keep it open. I was trying to do you a favor.
I know, I just don't think it helps us anything, especially if someone might come back and say, "We want to reopen it," and then we'd have to re-advertise it. I'd rather not go through that expense and headache again. I'd rather just keep it in the record.
That's fine. The question, I suppose, would be, do you have an expectation as to how long the engineered plans will be for the retaining wall?
I would expect that you would have, well, engineered plans for the wall?
Yeah. Because that's, I mean, that's still going to be a condition, no matter what.
To your board or to the building commission?
To our board. It's both, but to our board. Because, because we can't sign off on a site plan without knowing that the site is adequate and safe.
Yeah, okay. I would, I would think that we could get, it seems like you're five weeks out for a meeting? Are you going fifth week of?
So we're fifth week of August.
I know you have to discuss that later, but that's what it seems like.
And it's also, yes, and it's also a question of volume for that meeting, but yes.
I mean, if you can't approve it before we get those things, I would just, I would rather keep it open, and it requested you continue it to the August meeting, and I believe that we can get that information to you before then, and then...
And my only suggestion, so it would be, it would be two weeks before the August meeting to have information in, so that it can be properly reviewed.
Okay.
The only, the only other thing I would say there is, there are a lot of items that we're supposed to be on tonight that aren't even ours, that already went to August.
Yeah.
So we might have, you know, it's the type of thing where I want to say yours is quick and easy, but you never know how many things are before it or after it.
Understood.
So I just want to give you a caveat, that I can't, we can't promise anything, but it certainly, I think, in a perfect world, continuing is the simplest thing to do. Most people usually want an answer first, that's why...
Well, we, I feel like we kind of have one. We have a special permit on the property.
Yeah.
And it sounds like you, from what I understand, you're looking favorably, at least to folks that are in the room, on the plan changes that we're doing, so I do appreciate that feedback, but it just doesn't seem like it'd make any sense if there's a risk that we might have to reopen it. Let's just keep it open.
That's absolutely fine with me. So I would just go over the permit when you get a chance. So as of right now, landscaping plan is still required. It says approval, it says planable review and approval of detailed lock rating plan, which I assume is this one right here. Architectural plan and landscaping plan for each of the three closed lots.
Yeah.
Approval to obtain prior to issuance of building permits. Dwellings to have different design, architectural styles, materials, and rooflines. What we've seen a lot recently is, you know, some of the, we did townhouses on Fifth Mass recently and other projects, where they've done mixes of, you know, vinyl clad wood and shakes, or, you know, brick or cultured stone and vinyl siding. Maybe you can have, you know, a cape and a colonial, or, you know, whatever. Make them look nice.
I think we can probably mix it up with a colo, with a cape.
Make them look nice, make them look different, and, you know, the thing we're trying to go against, especially for something like this, where, you know, you're, we're putting houses into not ideal site conditions, we want to make sure the houses look nice, offset, you know, so it doesn't look like they're jammed in there, basically.
I understand. I will pass that feedback along.
Thank you, Greg.
I promise.
If that's okay with you, Pete, if you want to just rescind the motion, and we can...
I will rescind the motion.
And if you want to make a motion to continue, that'd be excellent.
Motion to continue.
Motion made?
Second.
And seconded, to continue. We'll put it on, we'll put it on for August. If you don't have them two weeks before, if you can just let a community development office know, so that we can scratch you, more than happy to continue it. This is a special permit, although it's site plan review, so I don't know, Chantel, if we're going to need, we might want to sign that extension document, anyway, because there's a site plan component tied to this approval, but it's also, we're also...
We're right at the beginning, so if we want to do an extension, we could do it next meeting.
Yeah, and I was going to say, we're also dealing with...
Well, I think our goal would be to put you in a position where you have enough information to close it, so, in five weeks, so.
Perfect, perfect, perfect. I just want to let you know that ahead of time, you don't have it, we're more than happy to move it to September.
Yeah, okay.
We might just have you sign a document.
And we can provide that in writing.
Perfect. Excellent. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you very much, Greg.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate your time.
Perfect. We now have a public hearing, which is a special permit and site plan review. Adam Bartlett of the Life Church, 424-438 Main Street, a proposed church seeking parking relief. I, yep, and I have Mr. Bartlett, who has his hand raised. Okay. All right. And Mr. Straight. Excellent. Okay. I don't know if you, Adam has his hand raised. I unmuted him. Whoever wants to give a summary of the plan and what you're doing, it's up to you.
Yeah, I can give a quick summary, and I'm sure Adam can step in when needed.
Let me pull up some stuff that pertains to this.
And then we also have Pastor Emmy with Adam as well, one of our pastors.
Excellent.
That's correct.
And if you, Matt, if you want anything in particular up on the screen, I just put the site plan for now. If you want anything in particular up there, I have all the documents you've submitted, so.
Perfect. You want me to start?
Yeah, please.
Good to see everybody.
Hi, Matt.
My name is Matthew Straight. I live at 279 West Street in Lunenburg, formerly a resident of downtown Fitchburg. I own Straight Real Estate Solutions, powered by Caldwell Bank Realty, and I am the broker of, real estate broker of Life Church. I am also a member of Life Church. I've been there for about five years, and I serve on their building committee. We are here today because we have a purchase and sale signed for 424-438 Main Street. Life Church is currently renting space at 484 Lancaster Street in Leamester, which is the Knights of Columbus. Before that, we were renting space at the Leamester High School. Life Church also has locations throughout the country as well. We have four locations in Memphis, one location in New York, one location in DC, and we have an international campus in Santiago, Chile. Currently, our current location now, we have 225 seats, and there's about 72 parking spaces that come with the building, and we rent an additional 25 spaces from the adjacent bank. So as I said, we have a signed purchase and sale for 424-438 Main Street, which I'm dating myself here, is the old Woolworth Building. It's right next to Shaq's, adjacent to the Mill Street Garage. That property has been on the market, according to MLS, since 2008, and previous to that, it was empty for many years. it was empty for many years. I think the last time people were in there was when Fitchburg State was running the theaters in early 2000, I actually remember going there and seeing one of their plays. So this has been a very prominent, visible building that has been sitting there vacant for 20-plus years, and we are super excited to invest a bunch of money in downtown Main Street. The plan is up there, do you want to, do you want to start with questions or you want me to continue, Paul?
It's, yeah, why don't you just give us an overall, you can maybe touch on how big the congregation is, what the average services are, things like that.
Sure. And Adam, anytime you want to, Adam, what I'll do is I'll have you talk about the design because I know that's your forte.
Okay.
In terms of our congregation, as I said, we're currently renting 484 Lancaster Street. We currently have 225 seats there and we have about 72 parking spaces and there's additional 25 spaces on the adjacent bank, the bank. So our hours of operation, we only meet on Sundays as a church typically. We have two services, one at 9:30 in the morning and we have another one at 11:15. So unlike the previous church that was in front of you a while back, they met on Saturdays, we meet on Sundays. And we do have a small, full-time staff, it's under 10 people, so when and if we move into that building, there'll be a small full-time staff there. So the plan is to renovate this building in its entirety so we can build a church, and Adam can get a little bit more specific, but we intend on spending north of $2 million at that site, which is an exciting and substantial amount of money for downtown Fitchburg.
Yep.
Adam, do you want to talk about the plan?
Yeah, I can talk a little bit, I can talk a little bit about the building, and one of the things that was asked was just about how large the church is. Currently, right now, we have between the two services, just round numbers, about 400 people attending on a Sunday, that's adults, that includes adults and kids, so that's every head. So that's kind of where we're at with two services on a Sunday, so a couple hundred people on a Sunday at the Knights of Columbus location where we currently meet. This property is about a 32,000, I'm just going to use round numbers to make it easy, 32,000, 33,000 square foot building, 16,000 on the main level, which I would say is the street level, Main Street level that is, and it also has a full basement, which I think is on the second plan, I think you have all three levels here, but there's a full basement that, right now, we don't have plans to currently renovate, but potentially could expand into that area to do, you know, a multitude of things, could be more of an outreach area, could be more classroom spaces if needed, something to that effect. But we would probably put infrastructure in that would be needed to, you know, future renovate that area. So it's about 16,000 on the main level, full basement, 16,000 on the basement level, and then there's currently a second level that is just in the front of the building, that's about 3,000 square feet, that is currently a couple restrooms and some office space. Again, just kind of wanted to say again what Matt said, is that we are, we are in the, we have a contract, a purchase and sale contract on this building, so we are seeking, one of the, and doing our due diligence and research, we know that there is a code requirement for parking. We know that on our letter from the building department, we know that the zoning of this property is okay for religious use, church use, but we also know that for religious use to be accepted in assembly in this building, that there is a parking requirement in the code, so we're, and this property is obviously just the building, there is no site with this property, the property line is the corners of the building, so we are seeking relief from the parking, our variance from the parking requirement as stated in the code, which is one parking spot per five seats. And in this design, we have 550 seats, which we kind of feel like is a maximum number that we would, we shot big on the design of this space in order to, you know, once we finalize design, that we wouldn't have to bump up against that, but that's kind of the max we feel like seating-wise would be in this space, so that would equate to 110 parking spots that would be required by the code, which obviously this site doesn't have because it has zero.
Thank you. So I suppose the million dollar question, and I know that you guys are probably aware that the other church, we had some relatively extensive conversations with them, both in the public meeting and previously, about, you know, the city's desire for keeping the upper Main Street, Mill Street lot as open as possible. One of the permit conditions we have for the prior church was that they discourage their patrons from using the upper deck of the Mill Street lot. The board chair and I both feel that we want that condition to continue to this church. Where do you intend to direct your patrons to park?
Um, yeah. Where do we intend on, okay.
Directing them to park, they're obviously going to look to you for guidance as to where to park.
Yes, so it is our hope to actually use both levels of Mill Street parking. We plan on spending a great deal of money in downtown and obviously we need parking. So we're hoping that the condition of not parking on the second floor, or the street level, is actually removed. And I have, and there's a few reasons for that. I feel like I sort of, I watch the video, so I know your concerns and questions, so if I may, if I can address those concerns regarding parking. I lived and worked on Main Street for 20-plus years. I don't ever recall a time where that garage was packed on a Sunday morning at 9:00 AM. And I think as a community, we have to ask ourselves, what businesses are open on a Sunday morning? Banks aren't open, attorneys are closed, retail is by and large closed. So your concern previously was you didn't want it to be a detriment of downtown businesses, and I quite frankly, I think it's the opposite. I think it's going to be a boom to downtown Main Street, simply because the businesses that are open on a Sunday morning are typically restaurants and cafes, and they will see an influx, a positive influx of clients and customers because of this church. And there's no, I feel that whoever purchases that building is going to have to spend a significant amount of money there, and in doing so, they're going to naturally want to use the first level of the Mill Street Garage. There's no better partner to say yes to than a church who is willing to invest all that money and all that time in the infrastructure of that building and we only need to use the garage, by and large, on a Sunday morning for a few hours. So if you're concerned about parking, there's no better business or entity to go in that building than a church who meets on Sunday mornings.
I would prefer a taxpaying entity, but that's just me. That being said, I, so, the alternative, I suppose, is, because it sounded like, not only in the excerpt from the PNS that we saw, but also in the communications that we got, that that's something that this church sees as a necessity, and I'm not saying this is a definitive, because obviously I'm just speaking for myself and not from the board, but if we were to remove that condition, the only way I would consider removing it is if you maintain as part of the special permit that your hours of operation don't change, 9:30 Sunday, 11:15 Sunday.
Well, so service starts at 11:15.
Right, no, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that those are your, that you maintain that as those are your services, meaning you don't change it to a 4 o'clock Saturday service, you don't change it to a 5 o'clock Friday service, that the services stay as a condition of the special permit Sunday morning.
Okay. Adam, Pastor Emmy, do you want to respond to that?
And this is a suggestion I'm throwing out, I'm not even saying the board's okay with it.
I understand. We're brainstorming here, I love it.
I have a couple of things in addition to, yes, we, it's really hard to control where people park, so some people that come to our church will be people that come every single week, and some of those are people that just attend and that are just a part of our church, and some people are like Matt, who are very involved in our church and, you know, more connected to us. I would say the first two groups, it's going to be hard for us to, we can ask them to park in certain places, but people are going to come and they're going to park like all of us do, in the best possible spot to the place that they're going to attend, so that's a little bit of our ask on the main level of mill branches, like, so we're going to have to stop people, so we would have to have volunteers stop people in the parking lot and say, are you coming to church here? Yes, okay, well, you can't park here. Well, there's 40 spots available. Yeah, Fitchburg won't let us park here, so you can't. I mean, that's just a hard, that makes us look bad and I don't think it makes the city look great either. But we do have a large portion of our church and congregation that are volunteers, and we do this now across all of our locations that Matt mentioned, is we ask our volunteers to park in specific locations in order to save the best parking, which would be obviously the, you know, the level we're talking about, for guests and newer people that are coming to church, and we would most definitely ask those volunteers to park, and I'm not familiar with the name of the close parking garages that are around, but I know there is other available parking garages.
Yeah, Putnam and Boulder, yeah.
Yeah, and parking in behind it on Boulder Street, I know there would be some workings to do with leases, which we would, which we will do and want to do in some of those areas, so that's one, that's one thing I would add. Yeah, and as far as the hours of operation, no, that's not going to work, I mean, we can't sign something saying we're never going to have a, on Easter Sunday, we're not going to do a Good Friday service, no, we're going to have a Good Friday service on Easter weekend, and we're going to have services occasionally on Sunday evenings when we're doing a special event. Now, they're not going to be all the time, but these things will happen because that's, you know, that is what we do.
Yep.
You know, and again, and I think to what Matt said, this building is in an urban setting, and I know churches do require a significant, I guess, amount of parking per the code, but no matter which business or non-for-profit or whoever moves into this space, it's going to increase the parking and traffic in, on Main Street and on downtown Fitchburg, which, like Matt said, I think is a more positive than negative.
Thank you, Adam. Just before we get to other board comment and public comment, I just want to go over a couple of things that Paul had mentioned. One of them, and you already covered it, was she was concerned about the other floors being utilized. I know you had said that right now you have, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you have no plans for the basement or the second floor, but that in the future, if something function hall or whatever, but as of right now, you have no plans for those spaces?
No, so the second floor is a really small space, I don't know if you've ever been there, and we, the goal of that second floor, if I'm not mistaken, Adam, is just to provide office space for our staff. And like I said, currently our staff is under 10 people. So it's very, that second floor is very limited, there's not much you can do there.
So just office space?
Just office space, yeah.
And the basement, basically keep it the way it is, storage for now?
I believe so, yeah.
Well, for now, it would be probably mechanical and storage.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's pretty dark and, dark and dingy down there.
The chair, the chair wanted me to reiterate that her preference is to carry over all the existing conditions from the original special permit. The conversation we had today, that not only did the use not change, but the number of patrons wasn't made smaller, the overall plan for the property, although it went from Saturday to Sunday, doesn't really differ all that much, so her expectation is that all the original permit conditions would carry over. She was wondering if, and I think you mentioned this when you started, Matt, that any spots on Boulder Drive, I think you said 10, that you rent from TD Bank, is that what you're talking about?
So where we currently are now, I think.
Oh, you're talking about Mechanic Street?
Where we currently, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So we're not opposed to looking into other spaces. So I know the previous church wanted to rent that private, the parking spaces on Boulder Drive.
Across the street, yeah.
Correct. So we're a very good neighbor, if you, a few years back, I met with the mayor of Leamester and he tried very hard to keep us in Leamester, but at the time, and it remains to be true now, there's just no space. So, and that was, if you look at where the Leamester High School was, that was in a residential area, I mean, it's pretty, it's a mixed sort of use area. So we had a great rapport and a great record with the Leamester, City of Leamester. One thing I do want to point out with the parking is, if you've ever driven by where we currently are now, you will see that we have volunteers, and I actually have photos here, of, this is our parking committee, and we do an amazing job directing people into the parking lot and making sure they're accommodated and making sure that there are no issues. In addition to that, if we can, and it's not guaranteed every time, we occasionally will hire a detail, mainly because of the national environment that we're in. So we bring, as a result of that detail, we have extra set of eyes of security in that neighborhood, plus we have our parking committee that does a phenomenal job, and it's a parking committee consistent, every time I go to church, there's at least five or six people there, and they're in vest and they're doing a great job. So we're very good at being good neighbors, and one thing that I want to point out regarding the parking is, you mentioned that there's not much difference from Saturday and Sunday, and I beg to differ.
Because they're Saturday morning, they weren't Saturday night.
Correct, yeah. And I talked with the parking clerk, and I asked him straight up, his name's Paul, I said, out of all the days that the garages aren't used, what day is the least used? What day is the garage the least, you know, empty, basically? And he said Sundays. So Adam is right that occasionally we're obviously going to have, you know, I mean, Good Friday is a huge day for Christians, right?
But you also understand, Matt, there's only 54 spaces on that, the Main Street Garage, according to Paul Bono, the parking clerk, 54 spaces, I'm looking at them right now, that are available, two hour parking spaces on the Main Street lot. So even if you take up 90% of them, there's, I mean, if anyone wants to go to El Bohio or, God forbid, you know, the new restaurant on the corner of Main that hasn't opened yet, or, and again, what we look at for the planning board is, we're here not for today, we're here to plan, and the plan is to, that is the most desirable parking spaces we have on Main Street, is the upper deck of that lot, because it's the closest to actual retail storefronts. So the mayor's office, I talked to the mayor personally, with the last applicant, as well as several city councilors, and every one of them had significant concerns about a church taking up that space. The chair and I have both conceded that even if, you know, even if you used, you know, 10 or 15 or 20 spaces for people that have difficulty walking or have young children or whatever the case would be, I have no problem with that, which is why the last special permit was worded the way it was, that the expectation is, the church would be expected to discourage their parishioners from using that upper deck. And I agree with Adam completely, you cannot stop everyone from, and we would not expect you to. It's just, I think that the expectation is that, especially being, you know, good potential future neighbors, that the expectation is you would find a spot for your parishioners that would cause no potential future impact to the economic redevelopment of that section of Main Street. So that's why, that's why that permit condition existed then, that's why the chair and I both feel very strongly it should exist today. And again, we're not saying no one can park there, we're saying the church should do everything in their power, especially because you have things like parking committees and everything else, to say, okay, parishioners park, Putnam Street, Boulder Drive, on-street access if they want to, whatever the case would be, but to refrain from using the upper deck of the main Mill Street lot as, to the best extent possible. I say that especially knowing that, and that's part of the reason why I asked you about, you know, conditioning your service. asked you about, you know, conditioning your, your services, that I know what's gonna happen, and it's nothing against your church, it happens with my church too, where, yes, the, you know, weekly, your services are Sunday, 9:00 and 11:00, or whatever the case would be, but there are gonna be oftentimes where you have religious education, or you have, you know, whatever the church holidays are, you're gonna have services where they could be during high-peak times. So if the parishioners are, are of the understanding that, oh, you know, we should park on Boulder Drive, and like the last applicant had said, we'll simply, we'll simply have them use the crosswalk, go up the ramp and come, come in the side door. Um, that's, that's why those permit conditions existed then, and the chair and I do not feel like this church is significantly different than the prior one, and, and that was, we spent a long time on that permit, which is part of the reason why we spent less time on this one, because we already knew what we were gonna expect. Certainly open to, um, the rest of the board comment, and I think, um, our economic development, I almost said economic development coordinator, um, the, Liz, what's your title?
Executive Director.
Executive Director, thank you. Um, if, if Liz wants to, um, say something, or if any of the board members have any input, um, I, 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 I think we've talked about this before, so everyone's aware of the project, so.
Have you approached the owners of the Boulder Drive, back there?
No, not yet. We wanted to see what, what happens tonight. And like I said, I think that would be...
And I don't know how many spots would, you would get out of that Boulder.
Yeah, I know that the, well, according to the, the video, the previous church reached out, um, to that owner, and they were, they were talking about doing that.
So I'm gonna preface this with saying, I put together a letter for the board and for the record, um, and this was prior to hearing, um, Mr. Straight's presentation today. The, my name's Liz Murphy, I'm the Executive Director of Community Development and Planning for the City of Pittsburgh. We reviewed the applicant's request for parking relief and discussed this with the mayor, um, with respect to the parking between the Main Street parking lot adjacent to the building and the Boulder Street, um, Boulder Drive garage below, there are 111 parking spaces. There are 30 additional spaces available for monthly leases. The applicant is proposing a 550-seat sanctuary. Both the mayor and the Community Development and Planning Department are concerned that church patrons would use all of the available parking in those two lots at the expense of the other businesses in that portion of Main Street. We're concerned about the negative impact to our existing and future businesses in this area and where, where their patrons would have no place to park. I don't, I don't know that, um, that much has changed. It sounds like they're not as, quite as large as, um, their presentation, um, suggests with the 550. Um, and, and if I can ask a question, I'm just curious if, if the applicant could talk a little bit about what the rest of that use is there, because I, my first reaction was, oh, they're putting a daycare center there. And I don't know that's, if that's the case.
Thank you very much, Liz, Matt, and Adam, I don't know if you wanna react to that.
Well, I mean, we, we serve as families, um, so...
Let me, let me answer that.
Oh, go ahead.
I understand the, I think I understand what you're asking. Uh, that is, so the way that we do church is that we have adults and kids meeting at, at the same time, and so this area, this educational, where you see, you know, grades and ages with kids, those would be, those would be areas for kids to be in, in service, in church, while parents and adults would be in the sanctuary portion, if that makes sense. We do not, we do not do, uh, daycares typically. I'd say, uh, I've been on, on staff here at Life Church for 15 years, and we've never had a daycare since I've been on the team, and we, we, uh, we just typically don't do them, it's just not what we do. We do church and not daycares, I guess is how I would say it. We do church pretty well, and...
Yep.
Uh, daycare's a different kind of, you know, strategy. There are churches that do daycares and do them really well, but it's not our strategy.
So they just run concurrently with your masses? The, you just separate the kids from the adults, and they do kids' mass and adult mass?
Yep.
Perfect. Um, the reason why that's so important is that it's a, it's a, it's an allowed use just like the churches, but it also requires parking review, just like the church does. So if it's separate, we need to address that separately and notify that separately, so. Thank you very much, Liz.
And I'm sitting here with Pastor Emmy, and I, if we can address the, the, I think I'd like for him just to speak to the, uh, you know, the, the parking, the main level, the first level of Mill, the Mill, Mill Street, uh, parking garage, just a, just a little bit about how we, you know, we're willing to, um, we're willing to do what you said and discourage, and kinda what I've mentioned, um, the people that are, are, are patrons, if you will, uh, to that, to that garage, but, you know, inevitably can't stop all people from, from parking there, you know? So I just think it'd be important for him, because he's, he's leading this church, you know?
Let me just, I'll add to that. Hi, I'm Emmy. Yeah, we can definitely align with the concept of, um, discouraging, um, that aspect, and like Matt, I mean, like Adam suggested, and you guys also understand that people will show up, of course, and, um, but we can definitely, culture doesn't stay where we put it, and so we gotta constantly keep repeating these things, um, but with the team that we currently have that oversees the area for parking, um, we can definitely get in alignment with that to continue to encourage people to park elsewhere, um, and manage that. I don't think, I think it's a tension to be managed, um, because I don't really think it's gonna be something to be solved immediately, and it's just really some eyes and some attentiveness to it to just ensure that we're just trying to accomplish the task. So, yeah, that's, that's what my heart just thinks about.
Yeah, and, and I have, I have no doubt that, I, I think part of the, I, I think part of the issue here is that you, maybe there's an expectation that you think that there's no flexibility whatsoever, and again, I'm well aware that there are people you can't control, I'm well aware that there are some people that might be, you know, because of their, um, you know, abilities, or age, or whatever, that they might need to park on the upper deck. That's fine, the, the city's concern, and the way we worded it, the way we worded in the original special permit was to, to discourage, because I know the church has the power to say, if you're able to, park somewhere else. And that's the only thing, we're asking the same thing of you that we asked of the last church, and I think that, um, you know, again, I think that as long as you're willing to make that, you know, make those efforts to, to, to convince your passenger, your parishioners to park somewhere else, I think that will probably solve our problem. If we carry the same wording over we had with the original permit, it does not say you can use no spaces, you can never use them, it says to discourage them to the best of your ability that they not use the, the upper level of the Main Mill Street garage. So, and again, I think it's, I think it's just, uh, you know, it, it, it's just getting over the, 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 the idea that I, I, that we're not allowing anything, we just wanna make it known that do what you can, and we'll go from there. That's, that's the intent.
I, I thought, I was under the impression it was more strict.
No, as a matter of fact, I'm trying to find the permit right now, Chantel, I don't know if you have it handy.
I do.
But, um, it, it, if I'm not mistaken, it specifically says discourage.
Yeah. Just, just so Adam and Pastor Emmy could... I, I know I, I previously looked at it, but if you can read the language, that'd be great.
I'll read out what, what it said, and, and, and again, this is part of the reason Paul and I had thought about this at length, it says, um, so, so one of the, one of the conditions is to minimize parking demand, minimize simultaneous use of religious services and assembly areas. Now, in your case, yours is one entire space, meaning for right now, with no basement, no second-floor use of church services, that's not necessarily a problem, but if in the future, like the other church, you're planning on having a separate, you know, function assembly room, the intention there is that you don't have a function with 300 people in a church with 300 people. Um, so that, that was the first condition. So the second one, and again, it's somewhat vague, and it's intentionally vague, to try and convey to you that, to the best extent possible, explore parking lease at Putnam Street, uh, City Parking Garage 133 Boulder Drive, or lease nearby private ser, private service parking, which like they had talked about was gonna be across the street if they could on Boulder Drive. Um, and again, that permit condition says explore, it doesn't say it's a necessary requirement, it says do your due diligence, see if you can help the city find a spot that your patron, patrons can park. Um, limit parking at the Mill Street Parking Garage during peak community events. So again, not a steadfast definitive, do the best you can limit it, I'm trying to find exact, because I pulled it earlier. You know what I, you know what I think it was? I think, I think I was looking at the, the, the actual minutes, which I have right here, and I think the minutes said slightly different than what were ult, what was ultimately in the special permit. Bear with me for one second. Oh, actually, I know where I have them, I just sent them the other day. Um, but, but even that, it, it, again, it says limit Mill Street Parking Garage, and, and, and I think the intention there is do the best you can, um, to, to, to find alternative parking spaces and go from there. Bear with me for one second. What day was it, yesterday?
So I know there was a...
Yeah, so in the meeting minutes, it says, it said, to the extent possible, religious service and assembly is not to use at the same time, uh, church members to be discouraged from parking at the Mill Street Parking Garage. It, the permit itself was slightly different, but again, it's, it's, it's limit parking at the Mill Street Parking Garage, which is, I, I, I think the same intent of do your best to get as many people as you can to park elsewhere, to try and say, if you have to use the space, use the space, but otherwise, you have the lower deck on Main Street, Boulder, well, the Boulder side of Main and Mill, you have Putnam, you have Boulder Drive at, at the, I guess, uh, permission of the Redevelopment Authority, um, which they very well might allow, I don't know, uh, but there's plenty of, and on-street parking, there's plenty of other areas where you can find some alternatives, especially if you encourage them to the best of your ability not to use that upper deck. It's really, I mean, that really is the sticking point. I mean, Liz had different numbers, and I shouldn't say different numbers, because you sent me the numbers that I have, but the, the numbers that, that, that we got back were, um, 52 spaces that were two-hour parking, um, there, and 61 total spaces to rent, so I assume it's 54 and 61, and then it says spaces available for rent, 22, I don't know why that's any different than the other number, but that's the email you sent me.
It was a little confusing, but basically, there's 54 spaces in the Main Street lot, 57 in the Boulder Garage.
So 57 on the floor, 54 on the floor, 57 on the lower floor, that is.
Yeah, there's a...
And 22 that could be rented by the man on the upper floor and the lady on the lower for rent, renting. And then there's another 52 spaces at the, at the Street Garage.
Yeah. So, um...
But, yeah, I just wanna say one thing about the parking situation. Uh, I, I'm not comfortable just simply saying, let's hold to the old rules. This is a much logical congregation. We're talking 550 seats in this congregation, and you, you simply can't say to the congregation, do your best. It, it, it's, it's never gonna work. People are gonna park where they wanna park, no matter what you say, unless you have guards out there saying, do not enter. It's, it's simply not gonna work. And the only way I can see this working with a 550-seat congregation is to have some absolutely paid-for and dedicated parking for the congregation, and the only place I can think that would work would be the Putnam Street Garage. Uh, we have a situation down there in that area of Main Street where things are growing. There's a lot of, lot of activity in that area, there's new restaurants coming in, uh, there's the Mill Street area that's growing, Riverfront Park is bouncing back incredibly, there's gonna be a stage down there, there will be events in that park, and there will be events on Sunday. There, there, there are gonna be times when there's gonna be no parking in that area. I've been to a few events there myself, it's hard to get parking without the church there. So I do not feel comfortable just simply holding the old rules in place with no teeth. The, the second comment I have, and this may be drifting away from the original intent of this meeting, but, uh, I'm just curious. Before Life Church decided on this 424 Main Street building, did they explore any other opportunities in Pittsburgh or any other locations?
We, we've been exploring opportunities.
Well, what, what were some of them that you looked at?
Um, we looked at, um, Lem, uh, Space in Leominster, it was a old, um...
I'm talking just Pittsburgh, just...
Oh, uh, this is the, this is the first space in Pittsburgh, yeah.
The, the reason I'm asking that is because I, I'm really kind of big and strong with historical preservation, and I'm wondering if you, it even mentioned or looked at the Congregational Church in the Upper Common, that has a congregation right now that's in dire need of membership, and it's a, it's a church that's on the National Historic Register, it has a very, very tiny congregation, it has parking, and, and what, uh, what a plus that would be to put $2 million into that building. Was that even explored or looked at?
No, which, which church are you referring to?
The big brownstone church on the corner of Main Street and Rollstone.
So the, the, the goal of, of our church was to find, in essence, a big box with no windows.
Well, you found it.
And, 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 and that's why this is the second church that is interested, because nowadays, unlike previously with the Catholic churches and the grandiosity, the modern churches typically don't want a lot of windows, they want very high ceilings, which is why, um, this building was appealing, which is also why this building has sat for 20 years, because there's no windows on the left side, there's no windows in the rear, and there's no windows on the right side. The, the highest and best use of that building is very tough. This building is gonna sit for a while, and the only reason why I can say that is this is what I do for a living, I sell real estate for a living.
I understand that, and, uh, I appreciate that comment, but in, in my opinion, as a board member, it's gonna be awfully tough for me, uh, to vote in favor of that church without a real, solid parking plan in place, and not just, let's park and tell you not to park there. Just, it's gotta be something more concrete than that, in my opinion.
I understand, Pete, I know you're, you're very invested in Main Street.
And I also wanna, and I know I mentioned in passing, but it can't be understated, I've talked to quite a few people, including the mayor and several councilors, and they all have the same concerns, so it's not just this board, and it ultimately comes down on this board, but, you know, if it ends up being a catastrophe, that's why we had a one-year review, one-year parking review in the prior permit, because if it ends up being a catastrophe, and, you know, three or four times a week that parking garage is full, we need, uh, we need a mechanism to say, okay, this is a problem, you need to solve it. So that's why that permit condition won't go anywhere. That one-year review of parking has to main, has to stay, because if this ends up being a catastrophe, and we find out that it's not a benefit to the city to have the church taking up significant parking there, and they're not, you know, and there, there aren't, you know, they're not trying to help rectify the situation, then we need a mechanism to say, okay, you know, a year from now, you can't park in that parking garage, or whatever the case would be. Um, and, and that is something that was brought to our attention by several people I talked to, and Paul and I both felt strongly that's why it existed then, and will continue, as far as I'm concerned, will continue to exist with this permit, um, if it gets approved, so.
So you currently have like 100, in Leominster, of parking spots, roughly, right? 20, you said 25 at the bank, and then 70?
72 parking spaces, and we rent around 25 spaces from a bank.
So you need approximately that many?
So, um, that, that's, we don't, we tend not to have problems now with, with that available space, um, so it's 72 parking spaces.
Any other board members have any questions or comments?
My big concern is that I think it's great that you wanna put $2 million into the old Worworths Building, um, but my thing is like, it's one day a week, and I would rather see something go in that building that's gonna fill 30 of those spots in that garage five days a week, and see more people downtown using downtown, to just overflow, um, this area for five hours out of one day every week. It seems like a big headache that, um, we might be holding back other possibilities for the rest of the week for this one big investment. Like, it's a risk for us.
I, I think if, I think that would be the opposite, in my humble opinion, I think that would be the opposite effect, if someone were to purchase that, you would have more... If someone were to purchase that, you would have more of a parking problem, because they would be there Monday through Sunday versus one day. So I think it's...
But it's not going to be 300 people at a time or 200 people at a time. It's...
The problem with the church, to Lamanda's point, is immediate volume at any given moment. It's not steady traffic in and out. The problem is, it's high demand for very short bursts of time, which is exactly what causes parking problems. I mean, I've been on this board almost 20 years, and we've reviewed a million parking studies from downtown Main Street. And there's every single one of them that, especially as of right now, there are absolutely no parking issues in downtown for obvious reasons. The problem is, when you have high-load, short-interval uses like this, and you have one or two or three of them, that's what causes congestion. That's what causes problems. But again, I will be, I do want to reiterate, because Matt, you had said this, and I agree completely. It is not lost on us that there will be people downtown, it's not lost on me, that there will be people downtown because of this, that there is investment that you guys are planning on putting into this building. Both things are very much appreciated. I think that the permit conditions, again, that we already had, were vetted over several months, and were well-thought-out, and were there for a reason to say that we don't disagree with the church going there. We have absolutely no problem with the church going there. But it's, there's a give-and-take there. The church has to give something by way of those permit conditions in order to, you know, to successfully operate there, not only for the church, but for the city of Pittsburgh. So that, you know, I don't want to monopolize all the time on this, but that's my two cents. It's not lost on me that there is a definite benefit for you being there. It's just, we just need to, we need to weigh that with what our board does, which is the long-term planning future of the city. We, as everyone, and as you had in the past, being a Worworths councillor and being involved in the city years ago, the expectation is that we're getting better, and we are getting better. And we need to plan for that future, and that's what we're doing, so.
And I agree with Paul with the previous conditions. I really, like, I would love to see you approach the owners of that lot and see how many parking spots you could potentially get out of that. And then coming back with, like, more of, you know, like, concrete, like, okay, we're ready to sign an agreement with them, and there's X amount of spots there, you know, and then the Boulder Drive section. You said your volunteers, you instruct them to park, like, as far away, right?
Yeah, it's like anything else. You know, if you're a restaurant owner, you never want to park in the primary parking. You want to park the farthest away.
At each, you know, your mass, like, how many volunteers do you have at each?
Pastor Amy would be best to answer that.
Like, 25 cars, that wouldn't be, that you could put, say, park in Putnam, say.
Pastor, are you still there?
Yeah, you're accurate.
I would say, like, it's, yeah, we would say typically volunteer attendance is probably about 35% to 40% of our weekend attendance would be volunteers.
But they don't all come in at the same time, so there's a schedule for all of that. So they cycle around. So the portion of parking space that the volunteers would need would be a portion. Then they come and go leave service, and then, you know...
Right. But I would say, if we're just going to, say, out of the 110 code-required spaces, I would say, yeah, 40 of those would be volunteers.
Forty?
And that's why I'm convinced that this is a non-issue. That even if we carry the same permit conditions over, and you have, let's say you have, you know, that's about 30% of the parishioners that are volunteers. You tell them to park elsewhere. You mention to your parishioners, "Hey, don't use the upper deck of Main Street." And let's say 75 of the remaining 60%, 75% of the remaining 60% of that congregation park elsewhere, then you still only have a small number there. So it should be a non-issue. I'm convinced it's going to be, hopefully, a non-issue. But those permit conditions, I don't see, I don't see a way to remove them.
So to satisfy, Peter, would it be, are you suggesting putting in the special permit that our volunteers? Is that what you're sort of looking for? The volunteers park elsewhere? Because if it's 25 to 30%, is that what I heard, Pastor?
Around 35 to 40.
35 to 40 people?
Not a percent.
About 30% of 100.
That's not my concern, Matt, with the volunteers. My concern is much more general than that. It's just the entire congregation funneling them in a location where they can park without just simply saying, "Don't park here." Because we know, we know how people are. They're going to park in the most convenient place they can, even if they're told not to. And it's going to happen. You see it happening all over the city. So I'm looking for some kind of a plan that can be put in place that'll put some teeth into where the parking is going to be.
I think, I think that is expressly the reason why we had a parking review after 12 months, because there's a lot of conjecture that goes back and forth with this. We don't, you know, we're assuming the worst, they're assuming the best. And I think the truth lies somewhere in the middle there. And that's why the permit condition for the prior church was, in 12 months, we look at it. If it's a problem, we then can say, "Okay, you can't use the upper deck." And we're going to, we're going to monitor it to make sure that it's not being used to that extent. Now, I want to preface it by saying that is absolute worst-case scenario, and I don't envision that ever happening, because I'm confident the truth lies somewhere in the middle, or hopefully, it lies entirely with what Mr. Straight is saying, where it's a non-issue entirely. It's a benefit to the city. Everyone comes, they park, you know, like I said, let's say 40% of the parishioners park there, and there's still some spots open every time they're there. It's a non-issue on Sundays when they're there. Then problem solved. Then, you know, we don't have an issue. But that's why we had that 12 months, because we don't know, and we won't know until we test this out a little bit.
Have we ever used that in the past, and it has worked?
So we routinely have special permit conditions where we revisit permit conditions. We have had them with parking. It will take me a moment to remember what they were. I'm certain we have had them, but we do it routinely with other permit conditions, you know. Anytime you have a permit condition that you're making that is either complicated to follow or controversial, we might put that in there to say, "Okay, let's see what this looks like and deal with it in 12 months." What ends up happening is that, by having that permit condition in our permit, even if we don't, exactly a year from when this is written up, revisit it then. In the next six months, in six months from them opening, we should have a good feel of if it's working, if it's not working, or if it's a catastrophe. And if it's working or not working, that's fine. We can, you know, we can massage those. If it's a catastrophe, that's when the board will reopen it and then take a stronger stance on whatever would be. So it's kind of a hope for the best, but plan for the worst. That's why it's there.
But also, this congregation has a parking committee.
We do, yes.
That parking committee could help alleviate the issues with the upper deck, like, whether or not you put one or two people up there, obviously, like elderly, like, you know.
Yeah. So not to put Pastor Amy and Adam on the spot, and it's okay if you say, "I need to think about it." But is that a fair compromise to agree to having all of our volunteers, which is, according to you, 25 to 30% park, not in the Mill Street garage? Is that a fair compromise, or do you want to think about that? I don't want to put you on the spot.
I suggested, I think, from the beginning that we would do that, period.
I think that that, without even adding that as a permit condition, that falls within, you know, you would be doing just fine if you did that, and then just had announcements every week. "Hey, guys, if you're able to, please use alternate parking garages. The city would like to free up that space for, you know, daily, you know, come-and-go traffic," which is entirely the intent of that upper lot, you know, people coming for 10 or 15 or 20 minutes, or even an hour, in and out. So that permit condition that was in there, which basically just says, "Limit parking at the Mill Street public garage 412 Main Street during peak community events," it's just saying, it's saying, "Massage as best you can."
Got it. I understand.
If you use some of it, it's not the end of the world. If you're using 100 of the available 110 spaces, a year from now, we might have to have a conversation. That's all it is. And even at that point, it's, I don't think it's something as serious where you say, "You can't use it ever again." It's just saying, we might, you might have to look at, and you were even saying, you may have to look at something creative, like, you have a police detail there during your services that, you know, that let people drop off and leave, or, you know, whatever the case would be. I'm just trying, I'm throwing out alternatives. I don't know. I don't think any of them are necessarily going to happen. But those are the things we'll look at a year from now, if, again, worst-case scenario, this thing turns into a nightmare.
So, Paul, a year from start of...
It'll be a year from the beginning of operations.
Okay, all right.
So we would probably issue, it would probably be worded in, well, let's see the way it's worded here. I was going to say issuance of an occupancy permit, but with commercial property, that's sometimes not necessarily the case. So let me see the way it's worded in here. Yeah, it says, "Playable review of the parking situation, one year from issuance of certificate of occupancy."
I think this can be a win-win across the board, and I think that's what...
Is he talking to us?
I don't know.
Yeah, it's tough to hear. If you're talking to us, please stand close to the microphone and speak up, because it's very difficult to hear.
No, I was mentioning that I'm in favor, like, of everything that you were saying. I side with you. I really do. My philosophy overall is that the truth is not found on any extreme. It's found right in the middle. So in essence, I'm saying exactly what you're saying, and I just want to just verbalize that. I can work with this parking committee and even enhance it to ensure that they understand what I'm going to communicate to them in reference to what you guys were saying, so we can just monitor it and then make adjustments accordingly. I see myself personally as a unique pastor, because not only do I run a congregation, but I have a business degree. So I really want to see small businesses survive and continue to thrive. So I plan on meeting all these people, wanting to just ensure that there's camaraderie in the area. They get supported, we get supported, so that ultimately, the city of Pittsburgh is winning. Because we're doing this collectively, so we want to add value to the team, to the city, and all these other components. This is really who I am as an individual, and I hope and pray that this is the value that we're going to bring to the city of Pittsburgh in conjunction with all these other small businesses that are on Main Street. So I'm saying the same thing that you're saying.
That sounds excellent, and it sounds like we're going to work together nicely on this, so I very much appreciate it.
Moving away slightly for one moment from the parking situation. Matt, was there a reason why there were no illustrations of what the outside of the building was going to look like?
We didn't have a lot of time to do our due diligence. The seller really wanted a very quick timeline for purchase, and, very quick. He's been waiting long enough, right? So we moved mountains just to get all our inspectors in that building in a very quick time. We scrambled to get, luckily, our churches, we have architects on staff, so we were able to get this plan fairly quickly. I knew you were interested in facades and how, what facades look like. So I actually printed out some photos of our campuses, and I'll give them to you. If you look at any of our other campuses, they are impressive. I've never been there. I've never gone to Houston before. But they are absolutely impressive, and you will be blown away by the resume this church has in terms of renovating buildings. It's exciting. I have them right here.
Were those facades that are on those churches, were those in place when they took over their property? Or were they renovated by the church?
Adam, you would have to answer that.
Yeah, absolutely. I can speak to that and agree with what Matt said. We moved really quickly, and we understand that.
Just do your best to speak up, Adam. It's very difficult to hear.
Oh, good. Good to know. Yeah, we did have to move quickly to get this, and we understand that we will need to probably come in front of the planning board again with the exterior elevations and facades and materials and colors and glazing and those sorts of things. But yes, so two of the, I'm not sure what pictures you're looking at, because I'm still just looking at our floor plan on this Zoom call. But so our most recent project, for example, is a very similar project to this. It's in downtown Mamaroneck, New York. We just opened that this March. And it was an existing facade, an existing 100-year-old building, you know, older than this property, that we completely renovated, and we have our church there in Mamaroneck, New York. And so, yeah, we did, we worked with planning boards and with the downtown area of Mamaroneck to mesh into a very busy downtown area to have a church in an urban setting like this, and redid the front facade. We have a building in Memphis, Tennessee. One of our buildings there is an existing shopping center. And we own the shopping center, actually, and we have the main anchor store, basically. So we did a, you know, we put signage, and we've been there since 2002. And interestingly enough, you can imagine in a shopping center with 10 other tenants, we coordinate parking every single weekend with restaurants and other businesses. We cone off certain spots in our parking lot. We had the advantage of owning the parking lot, obviously, but we do cone off spots in that parking lot too for our restaurants and businesses. These thoughts were running through my head even when we were talking about the main level of the parking conditions, of things that we could do to be creative and to continue to work with the city of Pittsburgh to make sure it's positive.
Sure. No, I'm looking at the Memphis, Tennessee building right now, and it's beautiful. If you can make the Worworths building look like that, I'm on board. But you're correct, though, Matt. I'm very much into, the building and the structure has to look good. And I would like to be able to vote on something, knowing what it's going to look like beforehand. It's kind of like buying a house. You're not going to really buy a house unless you know what it's going to look like. So I'd have a lot of faith that it'll be a nice design. And I think you'll probably have to get board approval anyway on the design.
Correct.
That's my focus, is making sure it looks good and fits on Main Street.
Matt, and Adam, and...
Amy.
Would you guys be amenable to, at some point in the future, and this can be, this can be prior to construction, providing us with what your plans are for the facade of the building?
100%. I was under the impression that we would have to come back to the planning board to do that anyways. I'm not sure exactly how that works in Pittsburgh, but...
Well, usually, so usually, it's a permit condition, and the permit does say that the facade improvements to be completed with 108, 120 days of issuance of the certificate of occupancy, but it doesn't say, that I see here, and I get some echo, it doesn't say, it doesn't say that the elevations to be provided, but I believe that was the expectation. So if it's okay with you, and again, there's no timeframe. You can wait until you're good and ready, and just show it to us before you do it, just so we can see what you're planning on doing?
Great. We're great with that.
Thank you. Alex Erlin, do you have anything to say?
This is the last thing. Everything's kind of worked itself out in these answers to the questions, so no, I'm all set.
Thank you.
See, my concern was the parking. It looks like that's working itself out with the annual review thing, so.
Thank you, Alex. Any members of the public have anything? I'm looking at you, because you're the only one left.
On the parking, and that you would entertain a bus shuttle to attend service on Sundays.
Yeah, so that's not a bad idea. I will say, let's let that fall under the review. If you guys end up seeing problems, take that into consideration. Because if not, when we get to that review period, if it's a problem, that will definitely be, I think, the first suggestion, that people get shuttled from either the Mar garage or somewhere else. For the time being, we'll, I think, I think the board was okay with the prior applicant, and we're okay with this applicant, of the understanding that you're going to work as best you can for people not to use that upper deck. That's, I know you guys are well aware now of where we're getting, I feel like we've got broken record going here, so. Any other board member or anyone else have any comment? All right. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion made to close the hearing.
Second.
And second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous deliberation. Does anyone have any, other than adding to special permit 2022-12, the conditions stated in that, adding to it just to provide the facade and elevations prior to completion of the, any new facade work? Like I said, I know the board chair and I had a long conversation about this. She feels strongly that... feels strongly that all the permit conditions should carry over. I think that, you know, we're, we've explained to the applicant now why they were there, and I think that the expectation is they're not over onerous, but they're just protective enough where it protects the city. Does anyone on the board disagree with that statement, or have any other conditions they wanna add?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Um, this was submitted as a new special permit, um, so, would it just be me migrating our original decision to a new decision?
It'll be an entirely new permit with just all of the pertinent, pertinent parts of this special permit moving to a new permit, yes.
Okay, I just wanted that clarification. Thank you.
Yep, yep. So, we'll draw up a new special permit, um, and site plan approval, um, with obviously the new applicant, and all the pertinent, the, the project description material submitted, and adding that one permit condition. Um, all the rest of them, I think, should carry over. Uh, if that's okay, and someone would like to make that motion? Uh, uh, hold on one second, timeout. I, I do have someone that, in the public, I closed the hearing, Diane, but I apologize if I missed you. Did you wanna speak...
Yeah, you did.
I, I, I apologize. Yes, we can. Did you wanna speak on this matter?
I, I, well, not on the church, but, uh, I'm, I'm supporting anybody that wants to put a church in Pittsburgh, so let's, let it go with that. Um, but I, I have some questions about, uh, the prior conversation about Zero Lancaster Street development.
Alright, bear with, bear with me, let's get through this, and then stay on, I'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, would someone like to put that in the form of a motion?
Motion to approve 2022-12 with the conditions that you have added to it?
Yeah, uh, yeah, the new one's gonna be a different permit number, but carrying 2022-12 to a new special permit. Uh, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Motion made in second, and we're gonna do roll call for this. Um, Alex?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Uh, Amanda?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And Paul, aye. That's unanimous. Um, so we'll get that all written up, and we'll go from there.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, guys, and I do very much hope you're successful, and I hope you're, you're happy to be here. Thank you, guys. Alright, Diane, it's, the floor is yours. I apologize, um, we, we didn't, um, we continued the matter for city storage either way, so, did you have something you want?
No, I know that, but I, I, again, I didn't know whether you were putting people on mute till the very end, or what you were planning on doing with this meeting, but, uh, if I thought we were gonna be muted for the whole meeting, I would've been there in person.
Sure, so, next month, August, the 5th Tuesday in August, which is what I think we're gonna do in a few minutes. Um, if you wanna stay on to see that, we're gonna talk about that in a minute.
Well, I, can I ask some questions right now?
Quickly, sure.
Okay, so, my first question is, can I have a copy of the plan that was shown, that you showed during this meeting tonight?
Yes. Send, um, either, either call the community development office and ask for Chantel Fleck, or send her an email, which you can get off the city website, um, or stop in, whatever is easier for you, any one of those three ways, uh, and I'm sure she can send it over to you.
Okay, good. And then, um, this gentleman, Greg Roy, made a comment. I was taking notes...
Yep.
That, that he said there was an interested buyer of the property?
Correct.
Do we know who that buyer is?
No, and the board traditionally doesn't ask that, because traditionally, it's private. It's not public record.
Okay, well, what, what, uh, so, you're asking, and I, believe me, Paul, when you were talking about what these, how these houses were gonna look, I was, I was cheering you on, okay? But, my question to you, Paul, is, if this property is sold to somebody else, do they have the same, do they have to follow the same rules that we're telling this Greg Roy that he has to follow?
Yes.
Well, so what makes him do that?
The special permit. They are, they, whoever buys this property will be legally bound to, to abide by the same special permits as the current owner.
So this, so this guy, this Greg Roy guy, he's not gonna build these houses?
Well, Greg's, Greg's an engineer, so Greg's just representing the applicant.
Right, but the applicant is not building the houses. They're selling the property to somebody else that's gonna build the houses, right?
As far as I know, as far as I know, that's correct.
Okay, and we can't ask who that buyer is?
Well, I, it's not usually in the board's purview to ask that question. We don't traditionally...
But I can ask if I attend the meeting next month, can I?
You can, they might not answer, but you can.
Well, I'm gonna ask, okay?
Sure. No, I'm, I'm just, I'm just telling you, Diane, that usually, I mean, I'm in real estate as a profession, I'm a real estate appraiser, usually buyers are confidential until properties close and transfer title. Um, he might, they, they might volunteer the information, I don't know. I just didn't ask because it's not usually pertinent to our conversation. What's important to our conversation is that we set permit conditions that we want followed by everyone, regardless of who buys the property.
Yeah, well, that's right. So we want the, the follow, everybody's gotta follow the same rules, I get that, okay. So, I, I have another question.
Yes.
Do you, do you know, do you have in your notes what the original height and length of that retaining wall was until they decided they wanted to change it to what it is, what they're proposing now?
I don't. If you wanna, if you wanna, if you wanna get the two plans from Chantel, from community development, you can probably compare them, and it's probably a relatively simple answer.
Yeah, well, I would like to know, because I know, yeah, well, I mean, that's why they came to this meeting, because they wanna change the height, they wanna change the length of the retaining wall.
Right.
And you know what? Based on this terrible weather we've been having recently, they'd better put a nice wall back there, because otherwise, those houses are just gonna roll down, roll down, roll down the hill.
I hear ya.
I'm, I'm not kidding you.
Well, that's for our, that's for our building department to handle, so...
Yeah, so, so the, what I also heard was that the engineering folks have not yet reviewed the, the plans?
Correct.
So, and they're gonna do that, and then, and then they're gonna give the planning board their opinion of, of those engineering plans?
The permit is gonna be conditioned on engineering being satisfied, yes.
Okay, but, and then, and then Greg Roy still has to provide you a landscaping plan?
Correct.
And, and an elevation plan?
Correct.
Yeah, and so all of that's gonna be coming forward by the August meeting?
Hopefully, yes.
Okay, alright. Alright, then, then if I will, what is Chantel's email address, please?
It is cflack@fitchburgma.gov.
And your last name is F-L-A-C-K?
F-L-E-C-K.
Yep, F-L-E-C-K.
F-L-E-C-K, okay. I will send you an email before I go to bed tonight. Chantel, I would like to see both the original plans and the current plans, and I'm gonna compare them. And then, I'll, uh, if you, you, you guys sent everybody a nice little postcard, which I appreciated very much. Um, are you gonna send out another postcard for the August meeting?
Um, no, you, you won't. Um, that is only for the original notice.
Diane, if you stay, if you stay on this call for about 10 more minutes, we're gonna talk about when our August meeting is.
Okay, so how do I get a meeting invite for the August meeting, then?
You can just click on the link on the agenda, I think, right?
Yeah, go to the city website, most likely, and it's on our agenda for next month.
Well, it, once I send you, uh, uh, well, I'll, I'm gonna send you my email, asking for the plans. Can you send me a link to the next meeting?
Um, yes, when that agenda is complete, I can.
Okay, well, I'm gonna put that as a note in my, my email to you.
So, so my suggestion to you, Diane, is, because there's a lot that goes on, especially in City Hall, if you don't hear from someone the day before the meeting, call community development or send them an email if you need that link. And again, that's only if you're not coming down in person. If you're coming down in person, we will tell you in 10 minutes when our next meeting is.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay, I'm gonna wait to hear about the next meeting.
Great, thanks, Diane.
Tell your mother and father I said hi, see if they remember me.
We'll, we'll do, Diane, thanks.
Yeah.
Alright, so, on to next order of business, which is our August meeting. Um, so Paul is gone the 4th Tuesday, I believe. Um, she had suggested we move it to the 5th Tuesday. Um, I think we talked last month about leaving that open. Um, if, if everyone, or almost everyone, is good with that, that's, the chairs hope that we can solidify our next meeting as the 5th Tuesday in August.
I'm pretty sure I'm good with that.
Okay.
I'm good with it. I wouldn't be able to attend the 22nd.
Perfect, that's, that's even better than. Alex and, uh, Lynn?
Just double-checking my calendar, but that should work.
I, I know, I'm looking at my calendar too, so what's, what's the, the date? It would be the 29th?
So it's the 20, yeah, 29th?
I'd already put a whole...
Yeah, that's fine, that works for me, too.
Yeah, we talked about it last month. Yeah, the 29th, the 29th.
That works for me as well.
Excellent, alright, terrific. So, um, our next meeting will be August 29th, um, and, um, we will not meet the Tuesday before, uh, we'll just meet on the 29th.
Um, Paul, it was brought to my intention, the September meeting might be an issue. Um, I may have to put that on the agenda.
Oh, because of the election?
The election might conflict, so...
The 22nd.
We may, I don't, um, yeah, it is, is that a thing?
So, so, so that was, so I was just, that's funny, because I was just reading emails from last, I was looking up something else, and I came across the email from last November for the election about how it would be a problem. We ended up staying in this room, and I don't remember how that ended up happening, but, did they move everything out? They locked it up in the corner, didn't they, or something?
I don't remember how that happened, but, um, our, uh, former planning, principal planner, um, who still is engaged, reminded us, um, that there's actually a law that says that you cannot have a board meeting on a night of municipal election, or election, I'm not sure if it's municipal. So, I don't, I don't think it's really an option for us to keep the meeting on that night, we need to move it to another night.
Okay, alright, um, okay. So then, alright, that's the 9th, I thought it was the 22nd, but it's the 19th.
No, the 26th.
Oh, 26th, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, I'm looking at the wrong week. Um, okay, so...
Well, you're talking about September.
Yeah, so the only problem with that is, if we move it to the 19th, that's three weeks after our last meeting, because we're moving our last meeting back a week, which I suppose is fine, especially because we're gonna have a very full agenda, uh, end of August.
There's five Tuesdays in October, so...
Yeah, well, the problem is, I don't wanna keep bumping everything back.
Well, and then what, that would be Halloween.
So, so my suggestion is temporarily, until I have a chance to talk to the chair, and we're getting together, um, I think, two, two or three weeks from now, to do some preliminary meetings, which we haven't solidified yet, um, but we can, we can definitively make it happen then. My suggestion is, if the board members can block off the 19th, um, in their calendars, um, which is the Tuesday before, um, that's probably the preference, because then if we go the first week of October, that's five weeks from the last meeting, I'd rather it be sooner than later, especially because we're gonna have a bigger gap between this meeting and August.
So we could always try to push off.
Yeah, and if we have to have a special meeting, we can. It's harder to schedule something earlier than later. So, um, my suggestion right now is, if everyone on the board can block off that Tuesday before, so the, the 19th, I think I said, 17th, uh, no, I'm sorry, I'm in October now.
19th.
19th, um, and we'll get...
I was just gonna say, Paul, I'm not available on the 19th, this is Lynn, so I'll be, I'm out of town on the, the 19th, I'll be on a plane during the meeting.
Is anyone else definitely not available that night? I mean, if, if, if people say they're not certain yet, I get that, as long as there's no other definite, because I, as much as I, you know, want all the board members to be there changing a meeting, I think we're gonna concede the fact that there might be one person not there. So, um, let's pencil it in for the Tuesday before. Paul and I will talk between now and then, and if we have to move it to the Tuesday after, uh, we'll talk in August, and we'll have that conversation then.
It's just gonna be hard for those people to get their stuff in two weeks before, when we just had the meeting the other week, so...
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I agree. Um...
But we can, I mean, can, I mean, obviously, we can also treat it as like an overflow meeting as well.
So, so that's kind of, that's kind of my expectation right now, is that we're gonna have enough things continued in August, um, that we're gonna need it anyway. Um, you know, I, in a perfect world, I'd tell the whole planning board to block off the following Tuesday too, but I don't wanna put too much on your plates either. Uh, you know, like I said, I would say, you know, if, if, if the alternative is the 3rd, that's the alternative. Um, it's either the week before the election or the week after the election. I don't think we, the board has any appetite for moving meeting nights, nor do we need to go through the issues of who has this, although the 3rd floor worked fine last time, that's not the end of the world. Um, for, for what we're doing now, let's, let's temporarily leave it the Tuesday before, um, and in August, we can have a more detailed conversation once Paula has input too. Um, because obviously, I think the primary consideration is that our board chair's available as well, so...
I have only one comment on the 19th. I can't do any new hearings, because I won't be able to do the posting requirements.
Okay, so we'll, so you, you, Paul and I can have that conversation, you, Paul and me can have that conversation, um, between now and then.
Okay.
And, and then, if, if we need to talk about an alternative in August, um, like I said, the alternative's August, October 3rd. Um, so, if people wanna put that as a question mark in their calendar...
Hold on, my calendar.
If people wanna put that as a question mark in their calendar, as a possibility, I would love it, just because it makes our job easier.
No problem.
Um, and if you can't do it, then we can talk about that in August. Good?
Yeah, I can probably leave that space open on the 19th, Paul.
Excellent, excellent. Perfect, yeah. I, I definitely, definitely leave the 19th open if you can, and certainly, Lynn, we get it, if you can't make it, and then, if people wanna just put, like, I put a question mark for October 3rd, if you, if you have that ability to, and don't have anything going on, then that makes our job easier when we're rescheduling it, so, because we also have to look at what, um, committees might be in here, uh, different nights, or have it on the 3rd floor.
We're probably gonna have that on the 3rd floor, because council meets the first Thursday.
Correct. Yeah, okay. So, to be, location to be determined, but, um, leave those place markers, and hopefully we'll be good, hopefully we'll figure it out. Um, before we get to minutes, um, there's someone in the audience who I wanna know if you need something from me? I, um, I, I, I think we talked already about your letter last month, are you good on that? I'm happy to discuss it with you if you ever want to.
No, no.
Perfect.
The right, another body?
Perfect, perfect. Um, so, Paul and I had a conversation about our meeting minutes. Um, I told her that I'm more than happy to, to approve them, go over them today. She hadn't had a chance to look at them yet, I did. Um, so I suggested, and she agreed, that we'll just carry them over, uh, to next month. But, because I have the changes, I wanna mention them, so that, um, Chantel can send Paul the revised ones, so we don't need to double up on them anyway. So, if you have them in front of you, great, I will pull them up here. Um, just go with me for one second. Uh, the changes are very minimal. Alright, so, let's do 1022 first. Alright. So, 1022 was the special meeting for, um, the Crocker School and for the library. Um, there was only one, um, change, uh, I'm sorry, there were two. One was just a typo, uh, where it says, oh, I still have that screen frozen, bear with me for a second. New share. Share. Um, okay. Uh, one was just a typo, which was right here, where it says motion second. This is under, um, public comment for, uh, Crocker, right when we deliberated, it's just a, there's all slash next to the two. Again, not important, just a typo. And then Paul and I had a conversation about, um, one was a question, Liz, I don't know if you know the answer to. One was a question that when the library was in front of us before, they, they said that they expected to be out for bid and ready to proceed by July and August of 2023, which is right now. And we have, we have never approved those site plans, so I'm curious if they know that they still need a site plan approval, or if they're that close, or if they're just that far behind. Not something you need to answer on the spot either, I just, I mean, if you don't know the answer, it's fine, I don't, I didn't wanna put you on the spot.
I can't speak to whether or not they know they need a site plan approval, um, but they, they did, uh, they are behind. So they had, they, uh, weren't getting some of the bids that they needed to get in on, um, at the, at the, uh, price that they needed to get them. Um, I believe that was the issue, so they had to go back out to bid again.
So, I, I also know, and the board might not know this, and I honestly don't even know how public this information was yet, but, um, someone provided me, and I forget who it was right now, uh, with a new site plan. It was different from, I think it was Mike that sent it to me, which was a different site plan than the one we looked at, significantly different. Getting rid of all of the parking spaces that we, that we had looked at originally on the left-hand side, and they changed the configuration, I think, to parallel, uh, all along the Fay Club, uh, which, I know one of the counselors had a, had an issue with, and I immediately had an issue with. So, the reason why I bring this up is, in order to, and I've said this to a few people at this point, in order to make sure that there aren't problems like we have with Crocker, where they said, well, we can't make changes, we're at the 90% design phase. Well, you need site, you need site plan approval. So, if you wanna make sure that you have everything in a row, get that before you put things out to bid, because if we ask for changes and it changes the bid...
Right.
Not much we can do. So, um, it, it, it just, just... Not much we can do. So, it just, just an FYI. I don't know if you want to mention to the, the...
I certainly will, and I do sit on the monthly building committee. Actually, I'm not the building committee, the library, the larger library committee. I can speak to the change in the parking, and that was actually a requirement, and I forget if it was DPW or police, but they can't have people back out into the street, so they had to change it to...
Yep, that was one of our, that was one of our recommendations.
Okay, it was yours.
We did this preliminary site plan, but we never, but we never saw the official change, which is why I said that.
Oh, I see.
Paula said the same thing. Paula said, and maybe we're just entirely wrong. We'd never signed off on a site plan. Matter of fact, this was, this was just other business, what we're talking about in this, these meeting minutes. It was just, they gave us a preliminary.
It's an FYI.
Yeah, which is why Paula, she seemed sure, and I don't know if Mike, you know, if he took this off the video or off his notes, but her modification to these minutes were at the very end, it says motion made me and seconded Peter to continue the hearing to October 25th, which we might have done, but Paula said it was other business. We had nothing to continue anyway. So, she was curious if that actually ever happened, or if that was just force of habit and got put in there. So, I don't know if you, if you want to look at it, that's something she's going to bring up when she does her, her notes. But that was it. The changes there were pretty minor. Like I said, we're not going to vote on them anyway, so that was more of a, I'm glad we saw them because I would have forgot that, I wouldn't have forgot that we didn't do a site plan. I just would have forgot that their timeline, they expected to be started by this fall. So, just remind them that they still need to come to the planning board with the site plan before, you know, before any building permits or anything are issued.
Absolutely, and I know they're going in front of conservation soon, so they are working in that arena with their designers, but I think it would have come up if they realized that they needed to come back to the planning board, so.
Yeah, I know some people realize that. I just don't know they realize that, you know, it has to be done ahead of time. So, it's something that, the sooner the better.
Okay.
Thanks, Liz. All right, and then the next one are, that's the wrong thing, hold on. It is January 24th, 23, which I will pull up right here. And I had a couple here. Page two, down three quarters of the, down the bottom of the page, under 8 Womond Street, it says, "Units will be side-by-side townhouse-style three-bedroom condominiums, each approximately 13,000 square feet." That's got to be 1,300. Those units are not 13,000 square feet. So, again, just a typo. I got nothing on page three. So, on New View, which is page five, there is a comment that I made that says, "Mr. Fontaine agrees with Andy. Having all-income restricted units is not desirable, but appreciated that New View has modified to include five workforce units." That's supposed to say, "Has appreciated that New View has modified to include five unrestricted units," because that was part of their change. Their change was specifically, matter of fact, if you read above, it says, "Seven units, section eight, 19 units, 60% AMI, seven workforce housing units, five unrestricted units."
Could you highlight it for me, Paul?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's right. I can give you this piece of paper, too, if you want.
Okay, great.
I already wrote and crossed it out, so I can give it to you if need be. And then, the only other thing was a question, and Liz, I am fairly certain you will know the answer to this. It's CDBG, year 49. It says, "Motion made Mr. Fontaine and seconded Mr. Cabotagley to make a recommendation in line with the community development department's recommendations with the following modifications." The last two, it says revise demolition to 82, and then it says add 22354 to demolition. I was curious why they both say demolition when if... It, if it, you don't even have to answer. If it needs, if it needs a change, just mention it to Chantel. I had a feeling that, and I didn't have my notes handy because it went back so far. If, I had a feeling that one of them wasn't demolition and the other one was, but it very easily could have been. I do remember changing the demolition numbers, but I would have thought if we, you know, if you revise one, wouldn't it just be adding and subtracting? Wouldn't it just be one number? But, but I don't know. It was... Oh, there was one other thing, back one, and I didn't circle it, but page six, under 179 Pratt Street, probably just something we just want to clarify. It's, and I know why, because he couldn't understand him. It says David King RE/MAX, and then it says and strong accent. I think we can look up who the applicant was and put him in there because that's who it was.
Okay.
I think it was, if memory serves, Ebenezer something or other, but I'm doing that off the top of my head. And, and I could be confusing him with someone else, too, so I don't, I don't know, but that was the only other thing. I just want, I just don't want them to get up on the city website with that. So, we can, and Chantel, if you want those, you can have them. I'll give them to you, but I don't know how easy it is to find everything. All right, let me, oh, and I have that special permit I get to give back to you, too. Those are somewhat out of order, but you can take those. And some I highlighted and some I wrote on it, and this is the special permit I took from you. Excellent, thank you. All right. So, we'll deal with those next month, and Paula had said that she hopes that that's a good start, and that we have two more next month, and that'd be great. Start catching up on the six or seven months we need. Any other board questions or comments? Any other, other business anyone wants to mention? I did have one, I don't know if anyone caught, at the beginning of the meeting, I mentioned to Nick that I'm particularly cautiously optimistic about Tapanos Drive getting repaved, and I'm very antsy that we get moving with that because I want to make sure C H C still has that money to pave that road, especially now. This, the Main Street section that's down, I found myself, I use that road occasionally. I've been using it a lot more because now when I go from west of the Greek church to Lunenburg, I have to go Arlington Street and that way, and it's, it's not, not a good road to be on, and plus it's free paving as far as the city's concerned. We're not doing it. So, I think it's something that we need to make sure we get on, and it needs to happen this year. We're about, I want to say 10 or 12 years in from when we had that permit condition, so. Anyway.
It's crazy.
If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made?
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thanks, guys. Breaking records tonight.
Hit the gavel.
Oh, yeah, there we go. Thank you.